You're listening to Good Morning Gwinnett, a division of Noise Media Network. Hosted by Audrey Bell Kearney. Sharing stories about people and places around beautiful Gwinnett County and beyond. Monday through Thursday at ten AM. Southern Living at its best.
Good morning, good morning, good morning, all my Gwinetians out there in Gwinnett land, all of you around the world, listening to the sound of my voice. It is a beautiful day here in Gwinnett County, thirty-nine degrees going up to a high of a lovely fifty-six. We're gonna be almost at sixty degrees today, y'all, so it is beautiful. No rain, just nice winter day, around sixty degrees. I know somebody saying sixty, I said fifty-six. Close to sixty, not quite sixty, but definitely fifty-six, so that's, that's beautiful. That is a beautiful day for winter, let me tell you. Cause last week, we had some cold days. It was like, I think the highest it got was like thirty-three one day. I was like, oh, it's cold. So to get to fifty-six today, that's a, that's a good thing, so anyway. Listen, I gotta give a happy birthday shout-out to somebody who is in my heart. I gotta give a happy birthday shout-out to my sugar baby, Carter Copeland. Her birthday was yesterday, that's my sweetheart. She is such a sweet baby. She turned three yesterday, so happy birthday, uh, Gia Sugar Baby. Happy birthday, Sugar Baby. She turned three years old yesterday. She had a party. She had a party weekend. Her whole weekend was party down. Her party in start, so she went to gymnastics on Thursday. And then from there, she went to, she had a birthday party on Friday at school. And then she had a birthday party on Saturday. Then she went to dinner to Papado's. Yeah, check her out. So she's three years old and she's hanging out at Papado's. I can't go because I had to do, I had to do a, um, I had to do the, the Popcorn Politics Podcast first. And then I did the Blacks United and Leading Technology meetup, virtual meetup, which, which was really good. So we talked about NFTs because that's where I am right now. Still trying to get my NFT off the ground, y'all. Still trying to get that NFT out to the universe. It was supposed to launch yesterday on Carter's birthday, but because I had all these technical problems, it's not launching, which is kinda good actually because now, now that I look, when I had a chance to look at it, launching it in February may be even better because that's Black History Month, so I was like, okay. First I was like, oh my God, everything is happening, blah, blah, blah. That's, that's me wanting. Um, but because it does have a lot to do with Black History, I'm like, wait a minute, this may be a good time to launch it. For Black History Month. I was trying to launch it on her birthday because my, my NFT name is NFT Grandma. That's my NFT name. So I was like, okay, since, since that's my sugar baby and it's her birthday coming up, I'm gonna, I'm gonna release it on her birthday, but that didn't happen. So now I still have to work on it and hopefully I can get it launched by, uh, February one. Which would be great because that's Black History Month. That's the beginning of Black History Month, so that'd be great. So happy birthday to my sugar baby. Also wanna give a happy birthday shout-out to my baby brother, Michael Bell. Happy birthday, little bro. Hope you had a wonderful, wonderful birthday. He celebrated a birthday as well. It's birthdays, birthdays, birthdays. I got, I got a birthday tomorrow. I got a birthday two days after that. It's birthdays, birthdays, birthdays. So I'll be shouting out all these birthdays. I like shouting out. Listen, if you got a birthday that you want me to shout out, or anniversary, a birth announcement, shoot me an email with the person's name and birthday, um, to Audrey@goodmorninggwinnett.com. Put in the, put in the, in the subject line, shout out. So that way I know I need to shout that out. I shout out birthdays, celebrations, birthdays, anniversaries, um, birth announcements, wedding announcement, congratulations, those type of things. So if you need me to shout out something for someone, um, shoot me an email and let me know the date that, that I need to shout it out and I will shout it out for them. Um, Audrey, A-U-D-R-E-Y, at goodmorninggwinnett.com. I don't care where you are in the world, if you need me to do a shout-out, email me, email me and put shout-out in the subject line, okay? All right, cool. Let's get on with our show for today. Today is January the twenty-fourth. It's also Beer Can Appreciation Day. I'm, I'm thinking to myself, okay, so, okay, people just put all kinds, all kinds of days on the calendar. It's, it's all right. It's, listen, Beer Can Appreciation Day. Some people probably collect beer cans. I wanna collect some things. I just don't have the space. Like when I do get the space, I need a, I wanna, I don't, I don't wanna farm, farm, but I want some land and I wanna put a big, I don't know if I wanna put a purple barn on my land or a red barn. I'm different, y'all. I'm different for real. And so I was thinking about this yesterday. I was like, I want some land, but I wanna be able to put a barn on my land, right? And I don't know what color I want the barn to be. I know, my neighbors are probably gonna wanna kick me out. Like what kinda weirdo is this who just moved in next to us? So anyway, in my barn, I wanna collect things. So I'm kinda, I'm, listen, I'm country at my soul. I just am. I was born in Albany, Georgia. I am country to the core for real. And I ain't making no apology about it. I am coun- country to the core. I know some people don't wanna know, they don't want people to know they're from the south. They don't want people to know they're country. I'm country. I'm all right with that. I'm country to the soul. I like country music. I listen to country music. And I be singing it in my, I listen to all kinds of music. I like music. Now, I, wait, let me say this. Let me back up. I have never found an appreciation for heavy metal. I'm just gonna say that. I cannot get with all that screaming. Like you can't even understand what they're saying. So not, not heavy metal. Don't have an appreciation for that. Jazz, R&B, rock, soft rock, um, some country songs I love. They're just beautiful songs. If you just listen to, cause most country songs I've heard are pretty much love songs. Like I can't, I think Kenny Rogers was the first in Dolly Parton. The islands and the streams, that is what we are. No one in between. How can we be far? Sail away with me to another world. And we rely on each other, uh-huh. From one lover to another, uh-huh. I know I'm messing up the song, but listen, I remember when that song came out, I was a little girl. I was a little girl when that song came out and Kenny Rogers, um, a lady, you're the night, it's, and I love you. I can't, I can't remember all the words. I just went blank. Kenny Rogers, when he did Lady, I love that song. So I like country. I like R&B, hip-hop, jazz, rock, soft rock, all of that. I like music. That's why I play music on this show. That's why I play music on this show. And let me keep it going. That's when I, when I get a lot of rest and have a good weekend, this is what happens. I'm just, I'm full of energy on Monday. It's National Compliment Day. Pay somebody a compliment today. Say something nice to them. You smell good, you look good. Now listen, wait a minute, hold up. Don't tell somebody you look good. Like, ooh, you look good. You could if you want to, you know? Just try to be tactful with it, right? Because you don't wanna offend anybody. Cause sometimes you can say that stuff to people and they get offended. Especially if you were at work. Don't say that to anybody at work. Just say, hi, your hair looks nice. Nice shoes. Yeah, say something about the shoes, the pocketbook. Don't say anything about the pants. Don't say anything about the top. If they have on a jacket, compliment the top. If they smell good, you smell nice. That's all you say. That's all you say at work, cause you don't wanna get in any trouble. I'm just trying to stop you right now. Like it's National Compliment Day. It's told, it told me to tell you, you know, that you sure are fine. Nope, don't say that. Don't say that. We still kinda in Me Too right now. I'm just trying to help somebody, save somebody. Don't say that. We're still kinda in Me Too, so don't say that. Compliment the shoes. Can't go wrong with compliment. Compliment the watch, the earrings, the necklace, nothing on the body. Now, if you out there in public and somebody smells good, cause I do this all the time. If I go about somebody and they smell good, I'm like, you smell nice. I don't care if it's a man or a woman. I love perfume. In my second life, in my second life, probably my third life. In my third life, I'm gonna own a, a perfume company that sells shades. I love shades. Sunglasses. I love sunglasses and I love perfume. It's also National Peanut Butter Day. Peanut butter gelatin, peanut butter gelatin. It's National Peanut Butter Day. So if you like peanut butter, knock yourself out. I do. I eat peanut butter on a spoon just by itself. Heck, I should be eating peanut butter anyway. I got on the scale this morning and it was, huh, it wasn't good. I was like, ah, that's cause I ate too many Reese's over the weekend. I like Reese's cup. Like that's my, I don't buy them. My husband brings them home and I like them. I eat a lot. I probably like three. That's probably too many. That's why my scale didn't show a change. It actually showed like a half of, a half a pound weight gain. I don't know. I was like, oh my God, I'm gonna lose the challenge. Yeah, like I'm sucking in the challenge right now. I was doing good at first and every day I get on the scales like, ah, so we, cause when we sent our, when I, when we sent our weights in, the weight is, I saw my friend Rosa, hers is, I think she may be down five pounds. I'm back up my three pounds that I had lost. Three and a half now. I know I'm sucking. It's cause I'm not, here's the thing, y'all. I'm trying to get my NFT off the ground and so when I, when I'm in mode, when I'm in business mode like that, I don't get up from this computer. That's the problem. When I do get up, I get up, I grab something to eat and I come sit right back down because I'm all in on what I'm doing. And that's not a good thing, but I can't help it. Ah, I'm trying, I'm working on it. I am working on that thing. When I'm in business mode, I am in business mode. And that's not a good thing for me when it comes to weight loss because I'm not active. I'm in this chair like most of my time at this computer trying to get things and make things happen. Cause I'm learning, but anyway. I did an NFT meetup like yesterday, a virtual meetup for Built and it was really good. People had really, they had questioned what was crazy is, I've only been doing this about three weeks and I, I'm amazed at all of, all of the stuff I've learned about launching an NFT in the last three weeks. And I'm not, I'm nowhere near where I need to be, um, with my knowledge in the, in the area. But I guess when you, when you have knowledge and people have none, you're somewhere. And so people had good questions, questions that I was actually able to answer, which was, which I was so, so excited about that. Because I am in the process. I am going through it right now, launching the NFT. Um, but I wasn't sure I was gonna be able to answer all the questions. Now, there was one question that, that, that someone, this guy asked me. I had no clue about because everywhere, and I can't get into this cause it's really long. But he asked me about, um, launching an NFT on platforms, on blockchain platforms that had no gas fees. And I hadn't seen one. I saw that there were some that had cheap gas fees, but not none, not zero gas fees. So I was like, okay, now I gotta go back and look that up. Um, platforms with no gas fees? Like that was, I didn't, I didn't know anything about that. So this whole thing, this whole NFT thing is exciting. The metaverse itself is exciting. Like I know that's why my weight was like sucking, cause I spent all day yesterday after I got off the, the, the train, the, uh, Popcorn Politics Podcast and then I got off the virtual meetup with the NFTs. All I did was study the metaverse yesterday. And when I tell y'all, I'm so excited about the metaverse. You have no idea. Like it is just exciting. And so, um, I got off the, off the, off the meetup and I went straight into the metaverse training and it's just, oh, it's just so exciting. It's really exciting. Anyway, let's get, so for people who are not taken, they'd be like, lady, that is not, we don't even know what that is. Don't worry. I, I'm gonna share. As I move along through this, through this journey, I will be sharing. Yep, on Tuesdays. We're gonna talk business on Tuesday. It's gonna be all about the metaverse. Or I may be launching a new podcast. Ha, I might be launching a new podcast. Yeah, I know I'm the podcast queen. I am. All right, anyway, let's get on with the show. Today is January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. It's Monday. We're gonna do these Horoscopes brought to you by Notary DeShard and Micah Thieson. Let's pick it up like we always do and that is with Aries. Don't be afraid to pursue unfamiliar grounds. You are best to get out of the house today. Be sure that the person you're drawn to is not already involved. Here's the situation, Aries, you don't wanna be number three. I'm just saying. Let me tell you something. If somebody's involved with somebody, let them get out of their situation first. Because if you get into the situation while they're still in the situation, you're gonna have bad luck. I'm just trying to help you out. Even if they break up after you all are together, but you were like in the midst of them while they were together and you, and they break up and then it's you, oh, you're gonna have bad luck. I trust me. I know I've been down that road. Didn't mean to do it, happened at a bad time, got involved with somebody, they were in a situation. I should've let them, got out, I should've have let them gotten out of their situation, but they told me, oh, it was over anyway. And I came right in the middle of that and trust me, I had, I had a, I wanna say a word, but I had a lot of bad luck because of that. And I believe, I believe that. Now, that may not be necessarily true, but I believe that I had bad luck because I, because of that situation. And I have, I have repented. I have said, I'm sorry. None of that, I, you know, I don't know if it matters or not, but what I would say, do not get in the situation with someone that's in a situation. Let them get out of their situation first. Totally out of it. Totally like totally removed from the situation before you get into the situation with them. Because I believe that you're gonna suffer together if you get involved with them while they're in your situation. This is what I believe. You're gonna suffer together. If you, if they're involved with somebody and then you get involved with them while they're involved with somebody and then they, they become uninvolved with that person, but you're still in the situation and you guys get together. I believe that the two of you are gonna suffer together. So do not get involved with somebody who's involved with somebody. Let them get out of that involvement first. Yeah, then you're gonna, then, cause what's gonna happen is you're gonna suffer together and then you're gonna wind up breaking up. Because you're gonna be miserable. You're gonna wind up breaking up or you're gonna wind up struggling forever. Don't do that. Don't do that to yourself. Let them get out of their situation first. Taurus, spend time with your lover today. Go on with business. Get on with business. Females may put demands or added responsibilities on you. Yeah, get on with the business. Handle your business, Taurus. Stop wasting time. Stop making excuses. Look, stop whining. Get on with your business. Handle your business. Gemini, don't hold yourself back because you think you're too old. Absolutely not, Gemini. You're never too old. Reevaluate your position and make decisions about your future goals. You have been going through a period of change that has caused problems with your loved ones. Now, I hope that's some good change for you. I really do. And if they have problems with your change, cause it's good for you, then they have problems with the change. It's not your problem. It's their, their problem. They have the problem. Listen, do you, do what you gotta do and, and, and trust me, you're never too old. I'm about to start a new venture right now and I'm gonna be fifty-five, God willing, in about sixteen days. I had to think about that for a second. God willing, in about sixteen days, I'll be fifty-five. Yeah, I know. I don't look it. I don't act it. But I'm about to start a brand-new venture and I'm okay with that. Cause you're never too old. I'm excited about the metaverse. I'm excited. It makes me excited. So I'm looking forward to my new venture. I'm enjoying my life and I'm gonna do whatever I wanna do at this point in my life. Because life can be short. And so while I'm here, I'm gonna make the absolute best of it and I'm gonna do whatever it is I wanna do. And Gemini, I suggest you do the same. As long as you're not hurting anyone or harming anyone or harming or hurting yourself, do your thing. You're never too old. Do it. I'm doing it. You should, come on, do it. Cancer, you need to lie back and enjoy a little rest. Expect some flak. Children will want to help too. Oh, isn't that special? They wanna help too. Let me tell you something. My granddaughter is a helper, right? When she, now she's, she's so much better. Like her twos, like she was, ooh, she was a piece of work in the two. She's a lot better now. Like we, I watch her and she gets better and better as she gets older. When I tell you, when she first hit two, oh my God, we was like, oh my God, this baby put the terrible in the twos. Now she's calming down. She's like a little lady. But what we've always noticed is that the way to stop her from doing things was to ask her to help. Like we'll say, hey, help me. When you say, hey, help me, for some reason, that stops her from doing anything she's doing that, that she wasn't supposed to be doing. So we had to learn that about her. So whenever she was doing things that we didn't want her to do, we would stop her and say, hey, help me. And she would stop doing what she was doing and she would help you. So kids, children, smart. They're smart. They wanna help too, Cancer. They wanna help. Leo, you can make money if you concentrate on producing services that will be domestic choi- make domestic chores easier. Do not let them in on your plans if you want things to run smoothly. There could be opposition or temper tantrums on the home front. All right, listen, get ready for some temper tantrums. Yeah, handle them now. Handle them the right way. You know, you're gonna have some opposition and maybe some tension, temper tantrums. I don't know if it's the kids or if it's the spouse, but just be prepared. All right, cool. Virgo, problems with your skin, your bones, or your teeth may mess up your schedule. Ooh, that don't sound good. You may find that your plans will cost a little more than you had expected. Get involved in creative groups. Ah, listen, get involved in some creative group, Virgo. Some, the, some of the Virgos I know, they are pretty creative. So here's the thing, if you wanna enhance your creativity, get involved with some groups. Someone bought my granddaughter a camera for her birthday. Lord, y'all gotta see the camera. The camera is so tiny. It is the cutest, and she loves pink. She loves pink. But the camera is so freaking cute. It's a real camera with an SD card. A real little camera, looked like a little Polaroid, would take real pictures. I'm talking about good quality pictures. So she came in and showed me the, I mean, so tiny, y'all, it fits in the palm of my hand. I got it right now, cause she forgot it. Because she was here yesterday and we had to put it on the charger. So it charges with the, um, USB charger. And I put it on the charger for her so it could charge and, um, but the camera is the tiniest little, cause she takes really good pictures. So her mom is an actress. I mean, actress and a model. That's my daughter. My daughter act and she models. And she takes amazing pictures. But whenever she go in these photo shoots, she'll take Carter with her sometimes. And Carter has a tendency to take her phone camera and shoot the most amazing pictures. And we was like, man, that baby has a good, now this is two years old, y'all. Take the camera and watch the photographer and then she shoots her mom with the phone camera. So someone bought her a camera for her birthday. It is the cutest, tiniest little camera I've ever seen in my life. And it takes really good pictures and it has an SD card. You got it. It's the cutest. I'm talking about so tiny, it literally fits in the palm of my hand. That's how tiny it is. And she loves it. So she says this morning, I gotta get my camera. I was like, I know, it was on the charger. You forgot it yesterday. Anyway, let's go to a song. I'll be back after the song to give you more of the Horoscopes brought to you by Notary DeShard and Micah Thieson. Stay tuned.
First time I saw you, I knew all the time. It was something in the air the night. And in the way you looked at me. I get nervous when you get close and my heart fills up with butterflies. And then you leave me speechless. My world turned upside down. Just say that you won't go and break my heart, break my heart. Don't break it now. Remember, it's the only one I've got, the one I've got. Don't break my heart. Don't break my heart. Don't break my heart. Don't break my heart. Wanna tell you how I feel. Instead of keeping it all inside. So hard with you, I don't know why. Believe me, boy, I've tried, tried. When you're near me. My heart fills up with butterflies. And then you leave me speechless. My world turned upside down. Just say that you won't go and break my heart, break my heart. Don't break it now. Remember, it's the only one I've got, the one I've got. Don't break my heart. 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 Just say that you won't go and break my heart, break my heart. Don't break my heart. Remember, it's the only one I've got, the one I've got. Don't break my heart. Just say that you won't go and break my heart, break my heart. Don't break it now. Remember, it's the only one I've got. Don't break my heart. Don't break my heart. Don't break my heart. Don't break my heart.
Welcome back, welcome back. It's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney, bringing you the Daily Horoscopes, brought to you by Notary DeShard and Micah Thieson. Won't pick it up with me, bro? And do your job and spend some time with family. You'll be glad you did. Get involved in fitness programs that will bring you in contact with new friends. Don't give them the use of your credit card. Do not, Libra, give them the use of your credit card. If you value your credit card, don't let them use it. Cause they're gonna use it up and then you're gonna be pissed off. Don't give it to them. I know you wanna be nice and all that good stuff. If you want, you don't mind paying that bill once they run that credit card up, then give it to them. But if you mind, don't give it to them. Scorpio, take time to help a friend who hasn't been feeling well. Read between the lines when signing contracts. Do not let others put unreasonable demands on you. All right, you know what I'm about to say, Scorpio. Read between the lines, but here's the thing, here's the thing. If you don't understand what the heck you're reading between the lines, consult a professional. Do not read between the lines and think you gotta figure it out and you know doggone well, you don't understand what that contract is saying. Get you a professional. I'm just trying to help you out and save you some time and tears and money. That's all. That's all I'm trying to do. Sagittarius, your determination may make you a little overbearing when dealing with others. You are best to do something energetic with friends instead. Overindulgence could pause, could cause problems for you and your loved ones. Yeah, listen, do not overindulge. I know, sometimes that's, that's easier said than done. I get it. Cause I ate too many Reese's this weekend. Guess what happened? I ain't have no loss on the scale. I don't, listen, I don't blame nobody for my failures. It's me. It's me, it's me, it's me. That's the first step in recovery. Recognizing that it's you and you got the problem. I know, I'm, I'm always, I've been in recovery my whole life when it comes to my weight. My entire life that I can remember. I've been in recovery and I'm still in recovery. And I'm trying to get out of recovery. I slide back, I move forward and I slide back. Listen, it is what it is. I'm doing, I listen, I have done well. I lost a hundred and twenty pounds. I lost a little bit more, but I gained back fifteen. So I lost a hundred and twenty, gained back fifteen. So that brings me down to a hundred, I lost a hundred and twenty-six. Then I gained back fifteen. So that put me right around, eh, maybe a what, a hundred and eleven? Something like that. And I'm, and I'm maintaining. I've been maintaining now for four years. This is my fourth year. April twenty-third will be my fourth year. And I am, you know, and I put that pandemic fifteen on. That's what happened last year. I'm blaming, now I'm gonna blame the pandemic on that because I was afraid, I was afraid to practically breathe last year. Last year was pretty tough year. It was a good year, but it was a tough year. And y'all know why. I ain't, I ain't gonna rehash the whole thing again, but I put on the pandemic fifteen. Was it last year? Was it twenty? It was twenty and part of twenty-one. I had a rough year. But I, whatever. I, I, listen, I could lose it. I got the, I got the focus and stop eating Reese's cup. I know what I gotta do. Listen, nobody gotta tell me. I know. I know me. I know. It's me. It's not you. It's me. I'm just saying, first part of recovery is acknowledging you have a problem. It's me. I'm the problem. I eat Reese's when I'm up at night looking at stuff about the metaverse and I can't sleep. And I should be sleeping. I'm eating Reese's cup. I'm, no. When I, now let me tell you how it is. When I was losing, I was going to bed early. I was going to bed about ten o'clock. Because then I couldn't eat. But right now, I'm all enthralled in the metaverse and I'm up to two o'clock like this, like last, now, now strangely enough, I'm full of energy today and I went to bed about two o'clock last night. And yes, I did have a Reese's. I know. That's why my, that's why the scale frowned at me this morning. I don't need y'all, I don't need y'all battering me. Back, listen, I get it. I'm beating myself up. I, so I ain't gonna beat myself up much longer though, trust me. Only for the night right, right now. It's like, ah, oh, well, do better tonight. Do better today. There's always the next to take today. Capricorn, you may wanna talk to your boss about your future goals. Small business ventures can earn you extra cash. This is a good day for research and for sitting down with some good informative reading material. Ah, yes, yes, Capricorn, this is a good day for research. Don't be like me though. Don't just go all in on research to the point where, you know, now you can't sleep because you, what you're finding out is so exciting and then you're eating Reese's cup at twelve o'clock. Don't do that. I'm just trying to help you out. On the flip side, small ventures can earn you some extra cash, but understand this. It's not gonna be a get rich quick thing. It's gonna be a small business venture. There's a difference. Get rich quick doesn't really exist. It's a false, it's a false, uh, belief. That it doesn't, it doesn't exist. It's gonna take you some kinda time and effort to get this extra cash. So you might as well go ahead and make it a small business venture. Aquarius, restrictions may be difficult for you to live with, but try to do things by the book. You can find out important information if you listen to friends and relatives. Be sure that you have all the facts before you take action. Get all the facts. Get all the facts before you make a move, Aquarius. Cause you don't wanna go in that half-stepping with only part of the facts. Get the facts first. That's important. It's gonna make you look good and it's gonna help you state your case. So have all the facts. All right, cool. Last but not least, my fellow fish pices. You can meet interesting new friends if you join worthwhile groups. Your attitudes are changing rapidly. You are best to keep your hard feelings to yourself. All right, listen here, fish. I don't know what you got no hard feelings about, but keep it to yourself? Just keep it to yourself. You understand what I'm saying? Attitudes are changing rapidly. I hope that's for the best though. Cause we don't need you out here putting our bad energy in the universe, fish. We need good at, good energy. So if your attitude is changing, I hope it's changing for the best. We need as much good, good energy in the universe as possible. And if you can't put out any good energy, go back and do some more work on yourself. You understand what I'm saying? We need good energy. Good energy is gonna combat all the craziness that's going on. Yeah, we got craziness. I know some folks don't wanna admit it. We do. We do. All right, and join some groups. You may meet some new folks. Yes, some new and interesting people. Yes, new friends. Yes, join some groups. Things that you like. You know, you wanna be a photographer, join a photography group. If you wanna be a writer, join a writing group. If you wanna be a podcaster, join a podcasting group. If you wanna be a quilter, join a quilting group, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You get the, you get the drift. All right, cool. woo that was a lot that's all the horror scopes I got for you today I'll be back again tomorrow at ten AM to bring you more of the horror scopes brought to you by noted destroyed Michael Thompson now let's get on with some news you can use so I wanna give you I wanna give a condolences um I'm gonna send my condolences to the family of the two Marines that got killed um this past week in North Carolina they were they were marine young Marines at that y'all young Marines they got killed in a tactical vehicle accident when the when the vehicle rolled over on the both of them young nineteen years old and eighteen years old um both of them passed away at the scene of the accident they were so very young they were they had enrolled in the Marines that and and to to fight for our country and where it may be going and they didn't get the opportunity so my condolences go out to the family of Jonathan Corporal Marine US US Marine Corps Lance Corporal Jonathan I wanna say his name is Jerick and I I hope I'm not saying it wrong I apologize if I do but Jerick and also um US Marine Corporal PFC Zachary Rife or White Rifle they both were young men serving in the Marine Corps they died in a in an accident um when their vehicle rolled over on them last week so my condolences go out to their families as well oh my god I also wanna send some love to Regina King oh my goodness this was this is heartbreaking this was heartbreaking all of these are heartbreaking but these are young people that we are losing too too soon too soon but anyway Regina King um uh you know her from the um um oh god uh two two seven she played in two two seven and a bunch of different movies she played in um god um Enemy of the State with Will Smith she was his wife she lost her son his name was Ian Alexander Jr. um apparently he committed suicide it was her only child and so my condolences go out to Regina King and her family for the loss of her son Ian I can't even imagine I don't want to imagine I just wanna send her some love and light and pray for her healing and pray for her and her family during their loss so my condolences to he was twenty six years old another another young life gone too soon gone too soon you know I think about when 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 people take their own lives um I had a friend her her niece took her life two weeks ago and um she was eighteen years old basketball star in college you know just everybody just thought she was a happy person and her dad came home and and he and the wife and the baby they come home like the little the her little brother thinking he was about three or four years old and little brother go in this to the dad's bat into the parents bathroom and she has shot herself in the chest eighteen and everybody is going what the heck happened we thought she was good she was so happy and bubbly you don't know you know and I think I think we have to start talking to talking to people and talking to them and and helping them you know cuz sometimes we're so busy and we think everything looks good because we're not talking to them about them right we're not talking about then we're talking about the stuff we want them to do we want you to do this we want you to do that what do they want what are they dealing with you gotta ask them the questions I was like oh my god and I'm sure you know she probably thought her son was doing some amazing things because he was a musician you know he had a lot going on for himself and that's like I can't even I can't even I'm not a I'm not a therapist all I can say is we wanna pay attention a little bit better like if you have an inkling in your spirit that something ain't right I'm talking about it I don't care how small it is don't overlook it do not do not overlook that because you just never know you know you just never know just never know um looks like the 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 number of COVID cases are on the on the decline here in Gwinnett County which is a good thing um new reports of COVID nineteen cases are in on the decline again in Gwinnett County after the surge that began in late December and continued through the middle of this month which was January now the Georgia Department of Public Health announced on Friday that Gwinnett's two week case rate was sixteen hundred cases per ten hundred thousand residents the two week rate had been twenty one hundred two thousand one hundred eighty eight cases per one hundred thousand so we're down about what a hu- a thousand or something yeah that's great so good keep declining keep declining so we can at least try to enjoy the summer huh when I tell you I it this is exhausting this whole COVID thing is exhausting it is it's just really exhausting cuz you just never know like you wanna go outside you wanna have a good time then you try to go outside you gotta wear the mask I went out I was out all weekend with that mask on my nose right and I'm telling you I think that's the cause of me not being able to that's being I'm I'm stuffy all the time because the mask is on your face you can't breathe you're trying to walk I'm in a grocery store like oh my god this is horrible I just I don't underst- maybe that's why we go into virtual reality so we can I just don't know I still think we need human human entry like real human entry interactions I do as happy and excited as I am about the metaverse I still think we need physical human interactions I just do um now teenage kids probably will beg to differ because they don't have that much human interaction and and here's the crazy thing they don't know how to interact with people I was with my my nephew was with us this weekend right sixteen years old and I'm watching him and I just they don't have real human interaction for real it's crazy because they're so into games the whole time it's it's just the weirdest thing the weirdest thing alright I'm going to a song I'll be right back after the song to give you more of the rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County and beyond stay tuned
I ran away from heartbreak got nothing in return for my pain I never thought I'd be so empty so alone and afraid wasn't looking for a lover nobody understood where I've been I guess I thought I needed more time to protect my love from potential offense so I then you and you but I so you and I I'm not surprised by what I found cuz I know I needed something different and it had to be you out the blue somebody who listened and it had to be you out of all the people to reply my love couldn't be just anyone my baby it had to be you I didn't seem to notice that you were checking for me we were just friends so we started building trust and my fragile heart started to mend yeah I should have paid attention you would have been the obvious choice but I needed time to see clearly dig deep and cut through the noise so I then you and you but I so you and I I'm not surprised by what I found cuz I know I needed something different and it had to be you out the blue somebody who listened and it had to be you out of all the people to reply my love couldn't be just anyone my baby it had to be you you
one of my favorite songs welcome back welcome back it's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney giving you the daily har- the daily rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County so y'all know Everton Blair stepped down um as the Gwinnett County Board of Education Chair to run for a state position and Therese Johnson was just pointed uh elected as a new chair to to serve in that spot to succeed uh Everton who is going on to hire things so Therese will be the first black woman to serve as the chair for the Gwinnett County Board of Education she was elected on Thursday so I wanna give her a shout out um Therese was on the show she was on the show a while ago I think I don't know it was before she got elected or after she got elected but she's been on this show before so I'm gonna give her a shout I'm gonna see if I can get her back on the show which is pretty cool um I'll be moving finally going into the studio y'all I'll be finally going into the studio for the first of the year I mean the first of the month so I'm excited about that the studio is just sitting there waiting on me I'm the one taking forever but you know I had some sniffles and I didn't wanna go around anybody so I didn't cuz I was supposed to go in into the studio couple of weeks ago but I was like okay I got something I can't get tested um because there were no appointments which was crazy I couldn't buy a kit because they didn't have many and I was like I'm just gonna stay home I'm just gonna stay out of the way and you know to this thing passes and thank god whatever it was it did pass I never had any pains aches or anything like that my nose was just stopped up the whole time anytime I'm I'm stuffy like really really stuffy I'm 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 feeling like I need to be sus- suspect what I think is pretty cool though is that now we can get these kits that's gonna be mailed to our house once a month to test ourselves and so um and so now you don't have to try to go out and find it so I just quarantined pretty much that whole two weeks I was like I'm just gonna quarantine cuz I don't wanna I don't wanna go around anybody for real and 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 expose them if I don't have to and I did you know I did a really good job I stayed my distance when I did go out my head on the N ninety five and that so we've been had N ninety five since beginning of the pandemic when it first started because my husband works in pharmaceutical and so they gave them masks and so and then we had we bought a bunch of N ninety fives when it first happened because I know that he had had like an N ninety five like one one time and I was like oh that's the best now they have the best N ninety fives like their N ninety five but we only had one and so we had to get more but now you can get the N ninety fives from anywhere and but they hurt my ear but they are the best and so I had an N ninety five in my car and I had to go to the grocery store and I put that sucker on but when I tell you my ear was killing me when I came I was like oh god this thing hurts so I did a good job of quarantining myself um for two weeks and now I'm I'm better I'm but my nose is always stuffy because I wear the mask but when I tell you my head was just clogged up where I could just like lean to the right and it's kinda that you could just hear the mucus like lean to the right with me leans it was crazy like I could hear the mucus in my head um but that was the only problem no fever no temperature no none of that just 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 I I had full of mucus that's what I had but I took that nasty Buckley's ooh Buckley's is nasty y'all but let me tell you something it cleared it up it got it get it out the system it is disgusting anyway I said all that to say that um once I moved into the studio I know I always had these crazy stories right Therese was on the show before um and so now she is the chair of the Gwinnett Gwinnett County Board of Education when I move into the studio I'm gonna invite her in to come in to be a guest on the show to talk about her plans as a new chair um and how she's gonna deal with some of the parents and some of the issues mainly the biggest issue they had was people coming to the meetings and not wanting to wear their mask like that was a problem that was a problem for the last few years with parents and parents not wanting their kids to wear masks and this has been a problem so I wanted to see if I can get her on the show um when we go live cuz we're gonna be video live too um next month so we're gonna be video live and I'll have in studio guests to come in in studio I'm gonna have if listen if you think you can come in and co-host with me for a day you wanna be my co-host come in and 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 do what I do with me hit me up Audrey at goodmorningGwinnett.com and put co-host co-host in the subject line co-host for a day with me you know come in for an episode and co-host me I would love that like I wanna invite the community and come in and co-host me that that should be fun this is my show I get to do it the way I wanna do it that's why I love it that's the why that's why I play music so I'm inviting you to come in and co-host the day with me or episode with me put a co-host in the subject line and email me Audrey at goodmorningGwinnett so I'm saying let me spell it cuz some people like what are you saying Audrey Audrey A U D R E Y at goodmorningGwinnett.com I'm in I'm down south so some people say Audrey they say Audrey and I'm like nah it's Audrey and they'll ask me where you from I was born right here in Georgia with you but I was raised in Jersey so it's Audrey it's not Audrey cuz when I think of Audrey I'm thinking O O D R E Y Audrey and I say Audrey that's but that's what my mom called me she called me Audrey she didn't call me Audrey my brother called me Aggie my un- my uncles called me Art they all my husband called me Oid huh so I got I answered a bunch of a bunch of different names but you call me Audrey okay you wanna co-host the episode with me go to send me an email Audrey at goodmorningGwinnett.com put co-host in the subject line would love to have you alright congratulations Ms Therese for moving on up baby congratulations hope you do the school board justice that'd be a great thing wanna give a shout out and congratulations to Ms Tisha Stola-Dula she was named she's as a finalist as counselor she's a counselor at her middle school and she was named as a fin- a finalist for the American School Counsel Association twenty twenty two counselor of the year she is a nominee finalist for counselor of the year that is beautiful in the nation I I told my brother my brother is an educator he's a teacher and a football coach right he's always telling me you should teach you should teach but you gotta have patience for kids like that like you gotta have patience to be a teacher and I was like yeah I don't have that kind of patience like you know he has patience like that for kids he's with kids all the time I don't I couldn't imagine him calling me Ms Bell he hit me Ms Bell I would lose my mind that's why I only had one kid he has three I had one but later on in life I realized I probably would have been a slamming high school counselor but I didn't know I could be one I I didn't think about being one I probably would have been a good high school counselor because I am a researcher and I definitely would want the kids to have the best opportunities available to them so I probably would have been a banging counselor apparently Ms Dula is a banging counselor because she has been nominated as a finalist in the freaking nation best counselors in the nation let me give her a round of applause cuz I'm sure she get the same thing I would have got Ms Bell Ms Bell congratulations Ms Dula I feel like if I had to choose a career path over again I probably would choose a counselor only because only because I would be helping young kids um make life changes that's gonna set them up for life you know what I mean like nobody taught me a lot of stuff you know nobody taught many kids a lot of stuff going to coming out of growing up and coming out of high school by life you learn what you learn from your parents and then you went on to do your thing and after you went to college you got out and found out oh my god I have credit card debt out the wazoo because they put the credit card people on the campus with the free tables to give us credit cards that's what happened to me like I literally had all the credit cards they could offer me in college all of them I had all kinds of credit cards and twenty four I had to file bankruptcy yep I had I had so many credit cards I had so much credit card debt I couldn't breathe I filed bankruptcy at twenty four that is crazy and then I never did that again I was like I'll never do that again I got four credit cards I used two of them that's all I used after that after that experience I was like I'll never do that again and I never did I have four credit cards I use two and I pay them on time every month before time and I use them for my business I hardly ever use them for things outside of the business ever I hardly ever every once in a while I might do like dinner or something because I don't wanna touch the money in the bank but for the most part I got two I use I got four I use two and I mostly use them for business but yeah that's what happens alright okay so listen I interviewed Randall Tucson um a few like last year sometime and he was over at partnership a partner um partnership for Gwinnett well apparently he has left us at a partnership for for Gwinnett yep he was the uh Director of Economic Development for a partnership for Gwinnett I I was excited because he just had some great things that he had planned out and I was excited to learn more about them this year however I won't be learning from him because Randall has moved on he is now um the Economic Development Director over in Johns Creek yeah he he got hired as a new Economic Development Director to help the city attract new businesses and new jobs ah Randall you left us over here in 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 Gwinnett what happened what happened anyway sometimes you just gotta move on you know and I thought you know he he wasn't here very long so I thought he was gonna be here for a while and I figured he was gonna um you know be here and doing some great things but he is gone he's going on over to Johns Creek so listen do your thing I ain't mad you gotta do what you gotta do yep you gotta do what you gotta do who's gonna be our city manager here in Gwinnett County is the job open maybe it is I don't know y'all check it out you might wanna be the Economic Development uh Director over here in Gwinnett County for partnership Gwinnett yep you may anyway congratulations on your new position Randall hope you do great things over in John Creek I'm sure you will the Gwinnett County uh the Gwinnett Police is taking applications for the next Citizens Academy yep if you get a chance to go through one of these academies I suggest that you do I found it fascinating when I went through the Gwinnett Citizens Academy one oh one I found it fascinating I went through in two thousand and I think seventeen I think it was and I've been talking about it ever since because it was such a great experience but anyway the Gwinnett County Police Department is accepting applications until February tenth for the next Citizens Police Academy classes will take place Tuesdays and Thursday nights from six thirty to nine o'clock from March the eighth through May fifteenth according to the Gwinnett County website so if you are interested in joining the police academy please go into the Gwinnett what uh county website and and enroll it is free for our citizens Please go into the Gwinnett we- uh, county website and, and enroll, it is free for our citizens here, you gotta complete the application now. If you have questions, you can email Eric Rocks at William dot Rock, dot Rookes, R O O K S, Eric Rookes. Williams dot Rookes at Gwinnett County, Williams dot Rookes, R O O K S, at Gwinnett County. For more information about the application, uh, otherwise, just go onto Gwinnett County website and look up, uh, Police Citizens Academy. And, and be, um, and, and enroll, if you get the opportunity to do, I'm sure that's gonna be even more interesting because. The whole tour was interesting, when we did, the, the whole, the whole session was interesting when I did the Gwinnett Citizen Academy one-on-one. But I could tell you that when I went through the police part of it, where we got to go to the police station and talk to the police officers. I gained a new respect for the men and women in blue. Uh, for the work that they do because it was just a lot of clarity for me. You know, it was situations that I see that they put themselves in every day to protect us, now, don't get me wrong, there are some bad apples in every bunch, they really are. But for the most part, they're good and they are there to serve and protect us and that's what they do and we got to do some simulations that I thought was amazing. But horrifying, so I can't even imagine what it would be like to be in a real-life situation. Where someone is coming towards you with a knife or a gun and you got to think on your feet that quick. Now, some people are just stupid and a-holes, right, they just do stupid stuff because they just evil at the core of who they are. Others may not be trained properly, that's why the training grants that they are, are providing our county police officers. And our law enforcement officers, it's gonna be great to help them, those who just may need some extra help, right? I got a chance to do that simulation and in the simulation, it, the, the, the screens in the room were like. Floor to ceiling twelve feet, I guess, nine to twelve feet, I'm short, I'm five feet four. Uh, five, well, okay, depends on who you ask, I'm between five foot three and five foot four. But the simulation, you see this big guy coming at you with a knife, I have a gun and I have to shoot him and stop him, I missed him every time. And they was telling us that's why they shoot full-body masks because you can hit full-body, when people say, why did you just shoot him in the leg? Well, they were telling us like, listen, you have a better chance of killing them, shooting them in the leg, because if you hit an artery. That, that they can't stop the bleeding, they'll bleed out. So you have a better chance of stopping them and saving their lives if they hit, if they get hit, you know, upper body. If you shoot somebody in the leg and hit an artery, they could die, cause they could bleed out, if, if the ambulance or they can't stop the bleeding. They could bleed out really quick if they hit an artery, so it was just, I learned a lot and I had a better respect for the work that they do. Um, so if you get a chance to go to the Gwinnett Citizens Academy, um, Police Academy, please sign up and, and also check the website for the Gwinnett Citizens. One-on-one Academy, cause that's a very good academy as well. Alright, I'm going to my last song, th- then I'm gonna come back and give you my word of inspiration for the day, so stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back, another one of my favorite songs, I love that song as well. So listen, I gotta go, but before I go, I wanna give you my word of inspiration for the day and here goes, it says, find out who you are and be that person. That's what your soul was put on this earth to be, find the truth, live that truth and everything else will come. Let me say that again, cause I feel like somebody needs to hear this today, I feel like a pastor right now, oh, I feel like a pa- hey, somebody need to hear this today. Find out who you are and be that person, that's what your soul was put on this earth to be. Find the truth, live that truth and everything else will come, Ellen DeGeneres said that and she was right. You need to find out who you are, the one thing about me is that I know who I am. I know why I do the things I do and sometimes they are hard and they don't work out the way I feel like they should, but I know who I am. And I know why I do the things I do, know who you are, do your thing, do, be your, be your person. I don't try to em- emulate or duplicate anybody, I am my own person, I live my own little weird, weird universe and I'm okay with that. My pr- my husband tell me all the time, you crazy, yes, I may be crazy to him, you know, to him, to me, I'm fine. But he knows that I live in my own little world, now, when I say live in my own little world. It may be strange for some people, but it's my world and I'm okay living in my world, I don't need to live in somebody else's world. I'm good in my world, you gotta get good living in your world. That, your world, yours, because when you start trying to be in everybody else's world, when you start trying to be in, be, live their life, I ain't trying to live nobody else's life. I just told y'all, I want a purple barn, that's just me, I don't know anybody with a purple barn, I don't. I just told you, I'm country at the soul, I am country at my, at the root of who I am, I really am. In my past life, I think I was a rich white woman with a plantation, I knew, one day I'm gonna know for sure. I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do like regression therapy, cause I feel like that, right? Um, because there's some things I identify with that makes no sense in the real world, so it had to be in a past life. Like a barn, like why? And I wasn't a slave, when I, when I see these things, I was like wealthy and I had horses. And I had businesses, you know, um, but I'm okay and you gotta get okay. With being the person that you're supposed to be, you can't be somebody else, create your own identity, this is who I am. I get up, I crack jokes on this podcast, right, I play music, I talk trash, I laugh, I stumble, I cry sometimes. I talk business, I talk money, it's who I am, it's my life, it's the one that I'm creating, it's the way I want it to be. The only thing I gotta add to it now is more money, excellent health. That's it, so be who you gonna be, stop trying to be other people. Stop looking at other people's lives and wishing it was yours, stop trying to live your life like other people live, that, live your life, walk your path. Find your truth, be that person you were supposed to be, that's all I got for you today. Could have been anywhere in the world, but just spent the last fifty-nine minutes with me and I love it, appreciate you for that. If you miss any episode of this show, be sure to go to GoodMorningGwinnett.com to listen to past episodes there. Also, be sure to connect with me on the social media, follow me on Facebook at Good Morning Gwinnett. Follow me on Instagram at Good Morning Gwinnett and follow me on the Twitter at GM Gwinnett. And again, if you wanna co-host the episode with me, go to, email me, shoot me an email, Audrey at Good Morning Gwinnett, that's A U D. R E Y at GoodMorningGwinnett.com, that's G W I N E T T, Gwinnett.com. Shoot me an email and in the subject line, put co-host, that, that's gonna let me know that you wanna co-host an episode with me. Also, also, if you want me to give a shout out for birthdays, anniver- anniversary, birth announcements, um. Congratulations, shoot me an email, Audrey at GoodMorningGwinnett.com and put shout out in the subject line, shout out in the subject line. That way I know it's a shout out, send me that person's name and the date that you, that, that I'm shouting out, whether it's a birthday or anniversary or wedding announcement, whatever that is. Congratulations, send me that information, I'd be happy to shout it out on the show, okay? Also, listen, if you listen to the show on Apple Podcasts, find your favorite two episodes and give it five stars and be sure to subscribe to the show. Download the app from the App Store so you never miss an episode, download the app, if you got an Android phone or Apple phone. There is an app in your App Store for this show, Good Morning Gwinnett, there is an app for that, so download the app from the App Store. So all I got for you, I'll be back again tomorrow at ten AM, God willing, stay safe out there. Until next time, my friends, until next time, make it a great day, bye y'all.
You've been listening to Good Morning Gwinnett, make sure to tune in Monday through Thursday at ten AM Eastern Time to find out what's happening around Gwinnett. If you liked this episode, subscribe now and share with your friends, to learn more about Noise Media Network, visit noisemedia.us.